The following program is brought to you by the League of Women Voters, Oakland area. The League of Women Voters is a national nonpartisan organization established to encourage citizen participation in government. It never supports or opposes any political party or candidate. The statements and opinions of the candidates are presented in the interest of public service and in no way are to be construed as endorsement thereof by the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters takes no responsibility for any of the views or facts stated by the candidates.
Good evening, and welcome to this forum for city council members, city of Sylvan Lake. Today is September 13th, 2018. This forum will be featuring those persons who have filed for council member. There are five candidates, vote for three, for a four-year term. Sponsored this forum is the League of Women Voters Oakland area. I am Jerry Burden, a member of the League of Women Voters and not a resident of this district. The League of Women Voters is a trusted, national, nonpartisan political organization. Our members do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. While we never endorse a candidate or political party, we are directly involved in shaping the important issues that keep our community strong. As a League of Women Voters members, I have an opportunity to contribute in a leadership role such as this and has great impact on local, state, and even national issues. If you are interested in learning how you can join, I would encourage you to pick up some of the League's information available here tonight or visit our website, L W V O A dot org. The League of Women Voters did not endorse any candidate or political party. Views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and the sponsors take no responsibility. The format of this forum has been established by the League of Women Voters. We ask that the audience remain silent during the forum. Please turn off all cell phones or electronic devices. We ask the candidates to answer the questions with their views only and not to interrupt another candidate. The candidates will be answering questions submitted by the audience and screen for duplication and appropriateness by Tara Moon, a League member. If you need a card to write a question, raise your hand and we'll get you three-by-fives and pencils. The format is follows: All candidates will be giving a one-minute opening statement in order. Closing statements will be one minute in reverse order. Candidates will have one minute to answer each question unless extended by the moderator. All candidates will be allowed equal time to answer the questions. Our timer, Ann Warren, will indicate when you have 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and when time is up. The candidates are Ben Clark, Brian D. Etter, Joseph Salami, Michael Zabreski, and Stephen Peterson. We will begin the one-minute opening statement with Mr. Clark.
Hello, my name is Ben Clark. I'm 34 years old. I'd really like to thank the League of Women Voters and Sylvan residents for coming out on this evening. I have two children, Hendrick and Colette. Hendrick's 10, Colette's 7. My wife Jessica's on the Parks, Sylvan Lake Parks and Rec Board. She's also a Roosevelt PTO president. I graduated from Brother Rice High School in 2002. I got a bachelor's in sociology from Oakland University. I purchased a house in 2007 on Benvenue. And I opened a skate and snowboard store in Kegel Harbor in 2010, and we are looking to open our second store soon. I look forward to the opportunity to represent Sylvan Lake as a city council member and give all of my experience and best input to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Etter.
Good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the residents for showing up tonight. My name is Brian Etter. I am a current council member. I was appointed after Councilman Meskin moved out of the city. I've been back in office now since March. I was elected in a general election for the term of 2010 to 2013, and in my last year in council, I was nominated mayor pro temp. I am seeking reelection basically on the same platform that got me elected the first time to keep the city as pretty as possible and to keep our police department. I moved in in 2002 with my wife, my two boys. They're 11 and 15, Brendan and Zachary, and I would just like to have your consideration for reelection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salami.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Joseph Salami. Of course, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters in the city for hosting this event. I've been a resident of Sylvan Lake for 18 years and reside here with my wife Laura and our two Whippets, Nikki and Vito. I currently hold a position of senior manager for a global automotive supplier. I graduated from Oakland University and attended University of Detroit Mercy for my master's of business administration. I've decided to run for city council because I believe in the concept of giving back to the community and certainly the city that I'm proud to call home. In addition, I believe it's certainly the right time for a fresh outlook and perspective. I'm certainly glad to see new faces running for council, which I believe will bring a new and exciting perspective to our city for growth and development. As a business leader, previous business owner, I am particularly interested in the long-term and sustainable growth of our city, fiscal responsibility, including steady oversight of our city budget and ensure we continue to enjoy the services and city lifestyle we've become accustomed to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zabreski.
Hi, welcome, thank, welcome, everybody. Thank the League of Women Voters and everybody who's here tonight. My name is Michael Zabreski. I've been a 24-year resident in Sylvan Lake with my wife and our two daughters. I graduated with a bachelor's degree from Central Michigan University and a master's degree in finance from Wayne State University. I'm running for reelection for Sylvan Lake because I think Sylvan Lake is a great place to raise a family, and if reelected, I will work very hard to make sure that the residents continue to receive the highest level of service while maintaining a balanced budget. The city also has an obligation to all residents, from children to seniors. I feel very strongly about that, no matter what their economic standing is. So my priorities will be focused in the areas of public safety, infrastructure, and improving the quality of life amenities such as the waterfront and the parks. Because each resident may place a different value on each of these priorities, I'm open to considering different viewpoints as I shape my own. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Like my fellow candidates, I also want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on. It's really awesome to open up a forum with our community members and hope this will spark a conversation for the remainder of the campaign term. Again, Steve Peterson is my name. I live at 1565 Lakeview. I am a six-year resident of Sylvan Lake. I realize that makes me a bit of a newcomer, but really fell in love from the day we moved in with the community, all that it has to offer from the lakefront, the amenities, and the overall neighborly feel that is unique to Sylvan Lake. And really, I want to play an active role in preserving that, its heritage, and making sure that our future is secure. Like my fellow candidates, I want to focus on keeping our police department and ensuring a very clear and transparent future about the decisions that we're making around public safety, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Prayer to the questions. I'm going to read a ballot proposal that's also on the ballot. Shall the charter be amended to delete section 13.5B and 13.5C, which currently allows the city to levy millages in the amount of 1.87711 mills and 4.6778 mills respectively, and replace this millage with a new section, 13.5B, establishing a single new millage of seven mills for public safety purposes from 2019 to 2028 inclusive? It is estimated that the levied seven mills would raise approximately $662,970 when first levied in 2019. This would be in place for approximately $620,246 that the two millages being replaced would have brought in. The city's other charter authority to key boxes would be unaffected, and that would require a yes or no vote on that millage. First question of the evening, and we will start with Mr. Clark. Please describe your position or views of the future use of the police millage. Do you believe the city needs to utilize the full amount?
Yes, I would agree that the city does need to utilize the full amount. So my understanding is the reason that we're doing this is there is a two-mill amount that happened when there was an economic collapse in 2008. That's necessary for, just to run the city. And then we had a overwhelming support for the public safety millage, the five-mill part. So what really needs to happen here is that we need to adopt those two if we want to keep business as usual in Sylvan, if you like the city functioning at all, or the police. Both will need to be adopted. The reason for the complicated language is really about you need to get rid of the old part of it and adopt the new. So we need to get rid of the old, get the new in place, and then we can evaluate as we move forward, you know, how much of that millage is going to be necessary to run the government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Etter.
The public and safety millage was put in place back in 2009. The first term that I was here, we bought two new police cars. Since being appointed back in, we've actually bought another police car. It seems like the equipment and the gear that the guys need to protect us and patrol and help out with the other communities around here don't have the average shelf life of what a normally family car does. So the millage was replaced with a renewal to make it concurrent with election years and to refund the public safety millage fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salami.
Yes, I was a proponent of the original millage back in, I think, 2009, you said. So I certainly believe that that was necessary to keep our city services, our police department running. The, I understand that this particular part of the millage expires in four years. The other portion of the millage expires in two years, and they're lumping this together to extend it out for the next 10 years. So I believe, you know, certainly whether they're going to need all of it or not, or whether we'll expend all the funds necessary, or the funds for the police department or city services, that would certainly be reviewed over the course of the year. But I am certainly a proponent of the, of the millage.
Thank you. Mr. Zabreski.
Thank you. So the, the public safety, we spend, the city spends about $950,000 a year on public safety, and that's broken down into police department, fire, and dispatch. So the millage that we have currently in place for, only dedicated to public safety, is not enough to cover that full amount. We do borrow from the general fund, but that's something that we, as a council, go through every year and look at during budget time and try and make, make those balances of the consideration. So chances are, we'll, we will be using the full amount of the public safety budget, but again, we're looking at a full replacement of the seven mills that was originally voted on in two separate millages in the last couple of years with one millage going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
I do support the passage of, of the seven mill on the ballot, but I think it's important that we take a really close look at how those funds are allocated within the police department. We know about two-thirds of that, like Mrs. Brickie pointed out, go-to police. About another third of that goes, goes to fire. I don't know what portion goes to dispatch, but it's really important that we take a look at the future of, of the police department and what kind of condition it's in if we're going to continue to fund it this way. Because right now, we, you know, we still have a city manager acting as police chief is stretched extremely too thin. We need someone really focused on leading the department that's going to be able to effectively recruit and retain the kind of talent that, that we need to continue to operate a police department if we're going to invest that kind of money in it.
Thank you. Next question, we will start with Mr. Etter. How will you encourage the strengthening and the enforcement of the city ordinances and regulations to make businesses, tenants, and homeowners keep their property upgraded?
I'm not in enforcement, but if, I believe that as a resident, if you keep a nice and well-updated and in-repair house, and you keep your yard nice, and you put on the example that you would want your neighbors to have, that it's, it's reflective of the other people in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salami.
Yeah, I think that's very important. I mean, obviously, we all have to keep our homes up to keep the city the prettiest little city in, in Michigan, right? So I think in some cases, we may have gotten a little out of hand with some of the ordinances. I know some people have been actually cited for having their garbage can out, you know, in the back of their house or on the side of their house. Some of those maybe could be curbed with a warning or something like that, but in any case, I do believe that you have to obviously be out there and, and everybody should keep up their property. So I certainly believe in that.
Thank you, Mr. Zabreski.
So we, on city council today, you know, we fund an ordinance officer, and it's something that comes up quite frequently on city council, and we'll, we'll have a conversation about it. And going forward, we always ask our city manager, we are a city manager-run city, to look at any complaints and give us a report back on what's being done to enforce it. We always encourage residents to work through the city manager. Coming to city council is one thing, but the city manager has to have an opportunity to correct it, and he will send the enforcement officer out. One thing I don't agree with is public shaming that we see that sometimes goes on in these, on the website. So I do encourage everybody to work together, work through, we've set up a process through the city manager. So if you do have a complaint, work through the city manager, and it will eventually make its way back to city council where we can take action.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
I think in terms of strengthening the ordinances, enforcing them, and so forth, I think clarity is really what, what's necessary, just in terms of various ordinances, being very clear to the residents what they can and cannot do on their properties, and that enforcement is uniform and consistent in nature. You know, we, we do live in a small village, and I think the kind of process that Mrs. Zabriky outlined, engaging the residents, but also I think, you know, consistency in how the ordinances are enforced is really important, just in terms of keeping a level of expectation amongst residents, what's expected of them and what they can expect of their neighbors. I think that's key, to be able to, you know, build value in your properties and, and do what's right for your neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
So I kind of like, it seems like we're all kind of echoing each other here, but I really do feel that, you know, consistency is super important when it comes to enforcement. I believe that we need laws that are reflective of the community. It really is up to us to define those laws, how, and maintaining your property is paramount because it really actually, it plays into the public safety. I mean, if we have a bunch of broken windows, we're, we're going to have an issue as a community. So we need to make sure that we have like a top-level, great-looking neighborhood and everyone is on board with that. But, but it's very important that everything's consistent. You know, being a younger, newer resident, I, you, you do feel that there are at times different standards for, for different residents. So we, we need to, as a council, make sure that everything is incredibly consistent with its enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next question, we will start with Mr. Salami. Bloomfield, West Bloomfield homeowner is charged to cut down a tree. Could we or should we have an ordinance like that in Sylvan Lake?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question again? I didn't quite.
In West Bloomfield, a homeowner is charged to cut down a tree. Should we have an ordinance like this in Sylvan Lake?
The question's a little ambiguous, but yeah, I, I think if, if, obviously, if it's on your property, you should certainly be charged to, to cut down your tree, but I believe if it's city property, the city would be charged to, to cut down the tree if, if I'm understanding the question correctly.
So, I read it, it's written, so I presume that's what they're asking, yes.
I apologize. It's a little ambiguous, but yeah. I hope I've answered that correctly, so.
Mr. Zabreski.
I'm going to assume that the question is intended to say if, if the city cuts down a tree that's on, on your property, which a lot of people think is their property, but might actually be the road right of way, which is city property, although we're all, we all have to take care of the property that's in front of our house, which is a road right of way. But if a tree does get cut down, it's maintained by the city and feel it should stay that way, the city will also come back around and plant a new tree, too.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
I think I'm interpreting this question a little bit differently. I kind of believe the intent is to say, could we enact an ordinance that, that charges a fee for cutting down a tree? Sylvan Lake, the trees are incredibly important. The whole aesthetic of the neighborhood really is underpinned around trees. So obviously, it's very important to us as residents, if you like the city, to, to maintain that aesthetic. So that's how I'm going to interpret the question. Yes, I think we could enact that. You know, it would, it would take a little bit of discussion, though. I mean, and, and the nature of it, there's a lot. I mean, there's diseased trees, there's so many things to consider with that. However, you know, I, I do believe in preserving the aesthetic of Sylvan Lake, and that has a lot to do with trees. So if that's the case, then I could support something like that.
Thank you, Mr. Etter.
I don't think that another ordinance for cutting down a tree at the city's discretion would be the homeowner's responsibility, providing that the tree was in good health or they weren't already made aware or advised that there needs to be some pruning or something done to the tree. There's, I don't know if everybody's familiar with my property, but part of my property is actually in Bloomfield Township. The Christmas tree that I decorate every year, that's not even in the city. That's in Bloomfield Township. There was a tree, an oak tree, that was dying, that the city helped us take it down, and we split the cost with them, but it wasn't, it wasn't forced on us or anything like that. It was, we didn't know who could take down a tree that big, and we didn't want to cause any problems with the power lines, so we worked with the city to have it taken down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Yeah, I, I do think I would support an ordinance that charges a fee for residents to cut down a, a tree on their property. Like Ben, I'm interpreting the question to be more based on, you know, the aesthetic of the neighborhood. We have, you know, it's one of the most striking features of, of Sylvan Lake when you come down Pontiac Drive and you see just absolute monarchs that, that line the street, and it continues on through the neighborhood. Those trees take 100, 200 years to grow. I personally love it. I think it's a key feature of the neighborhood. Obviously, there are some things to consider, the health of the tree, maintenance, things like that, that a homeowner should be capable of doing, but to remove a tree entirely of a certain size and scale, yes, I think the homeowner should be charged a fee for that.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Zabreski. Do you think Sylvan Lake residents would benefit from a local bus stop in the regional transit system, and do you support the RDA?
That is a very good question. Something that I haven't really considered before, but at first blush, first reaction, public transportation is, is very important. From what I've known, the studies that we've seen, it's not a big need that I've seen yet in the city today, but I would bring it back to council and say, let's study it before we make a determination. It's difficult to make, I don't like to make any reactions without having the data to back it up, so I guess I would have to look at the analysis and say, how many people or what kind of residents would be looking for that type of service? Because it would be just another burden, potentially another burden to the city to maintain a bus stop.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson.
Like, like Mr. Zabriky, without knowing what kind of demand there is in the city, I'm not prepared to answer outright whether or not I, whether or not I would support until I knew how many, how many residents would utilize the bus stop or what kind of demand it's in. But I, I don't think necessarily that there's a need for it right now. I could be wrong, and I'd be willing to do some research on it and bring a bet to council and consider it.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Echoing them again, I do, I like the idea in theory. It's really a question of demand, though. Do we really have a demand for a bus stop? You know, you're going to have people coming in, coming out. What that would look like, I don't really know. I do know that I grew up in the area in West Bloomfield, and I can't imagine my parents letting me use public transportation, and maybe that's wrong, but I'm just, you know, I'm curious what that would look like, I guess. I would really need to see how much demand there really is, and is there a real community function to it? Because it would be a burden to maintain that, so we need to consider that. Thank you.
Mr. Etter.
I would have to concur with the other candidates here that I don't really like to make knee-jerk decisions based on the needs of the few. I don't really think that public transit is a viable need for too many people in the city, but I would be willing to explore it, and if it, if the, if the need outweighed the, the, the cause or the effects that we would have to expend in monetary funds or resources, I would be in charge of that, or it'd be for that if, if it was so necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salami.
Yeah, I think I would just reiterate what the rest of the candidates said. My only, I think my, just to add, another concern would be, you know, certainly the, the traffic, you know, how that would affect traffic on Orchard Lake Road, you know, the buses stopping and, and things like that. So of course, just like anything else, I mean, if there was a need for it, I'm certain that I would be open to discussion, so.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Peterson. Do you believe the city needs to make any changes regarding the regulations of large homes being built in Sylvan?
I don't think so, not, not as long as it's within the current parameters of zoning and do not exceed their lot coverage, height, et cetera. No, I think a lot of the homes that have been built recently, some of them being, being larger than, than their previous structures, I mean, I think it's fantastic. I think it's, it really shows the city advancing. It advances property values. I don't see a need for, for placing a limitation on that personally.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
I, I too don't really see, and as long as everyone is, is within compliance with the zoning board, I don't see a necessary need to, to get too restrictive on, on adding new laws to, to stop people from building houses. I mean, you know, you, you have to get, put that stuff over to the zoning board. They're the ones who are putting the time in. Council obviously has a say on that, but like, you know, you got to expect that people have, have our best interests in mind. I, I don't see a real problem. Anything that I've seen in the neighborhood, I really think every house that, I can't think of a specific case where I think there's any sort of problem that would indicate that we're building houses too large or too close or anything like that. It's, it's the, it's the look of a modern neighborhood. If you, if you go into West Bloomfield or Bloomfield Hills, you're also going to see the same sort of buildings. So I think everything we're doing seems to be okay to me, unless anyone has a specific house to talk about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Etter.
No, I would, I would think that if the homeowner or the property owner has the propensity to spend the money, they can build the biggest houses within the, the guidelines of zoning and city ordinances, and as long as, you know, I, I do know that there are a couple houses that may have encroached on somebody's Lakeview or Sunshine or things like that. And unfortunately, if, you know, if, if the means had supported the, the other person, they probably would have bought that property and built a bigger house as well. So I don't, I don't think that people should be penalized for having the means to do what they want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salami.
Yeah, I would agree. I think the, the zoning board obviously is, is well in place to make those kinds of decisions. I mean, let's face it, we're a pretty eclectic neighborhood, and, and anybody can pretty much build whatever they want to, and, and I certainly agree, the bigger the house, the, you know, it obviously adds to our, all of our property values, so I think that's not a bad thing, but just like anything else, I mean, it'd be nice, obviously, if somebody was going to put up a huge house and block your view of the lake. I mean, it'd be nice if maybe they, they spoke to their neighbor, but I guess it is what it is. If, if it passes all the zoning board guidelines, then I guess they're good to go, so.
Thank you, Mr. Zabreski.
Yeah, at this point, I, I think the zoning ordinances that we have in place today are working for the city. Again, it's, it's always a balancing act with our city. You know, someone might consider Birmingham, you know, they have Bigfoots going up and they have issues with that. Birmingham also offers great schools. And so here in Sylvan Lake, we have a choice, I think 80% of residents are in Pontiac. There has to be something. There has to be something to attract people here besides the water, and the opportunity to develop, experience the American dream, building a home, I think is something you can get here that you can't get somewhere else. And the ordinances, like I said, to date, have worked well. And we do have a very effective ZBA process set in place where people can go, make an appeal, and try to get an exception to an ordinance that they think is overburdening some. And we did, during my time on council, we did do some, do some stuff with the lakefront so that someone can't build right out in front and block someone's existing view. So council does take those things into consideration when issues do pop up, so.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Clark. How does the city communicate information on community regulations, services, and a friendly welcome to new residents?
Well, we have city council meetings that we hold every month. There's also city council study sessions where you have a lot more interactive opportunities. However, with that question, I, I do think what it leads to is that we could do a better job communicating with residents. One of the ways could be through social media, it can be through email. Oh, I also forgot to say, we do send out newsletters, too. But those are, a lot of what, what I just highlighted are more old-school methods. So I, I would very much like to see a more modern approach to communication. People don't necessarily have time, or it doesn't fit into their schedule, to attend city council meetings. I don't think they should be penalized for that. What I'd really like to see is a more interactive approach, because it's community. You know, while that's, that may be through new school technology, it's actually a very old-school idea, and I'd, I'd like to enhance that if, if I'm on council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edert.
In my opinion, previous years on council and as a, as a, just a resident, the, the city webpage is very comprehensive. The search bar works through munist code and everything else. If you have a question about an ordinance, you put it in, and it will look it up for you. If not, you can call a city office, you can talk to the clerk, you can talk to any of the people there. If, if there's a non-emergency phone number for the police, if you just have a question or you want to drive by, or you have somebody that elderly or, or ill in the neighborhood that you want them to check up on, they will. I, I think the, the small community mentality that we have here is very unique, that you don't get in other municipalities that have the same kind of services available for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salem.
Yeah, frankly, I think the city does a pretty good job with the webpage. I visited the webpage quite a few times and looked up ordinances and, and different things. Plus, the city does send out a newsletter every month, I believe it is. So I think they do a pretty good job communicating. As far as new people moving in, I mean, I moved in 18 years ago, so I can't really, I can't really comment to that. I actually got a welcome packet, though, when I did move in, that had a list of city services, had a phone directory and some other things. I'm not certain if we're doing that anymore, but if that's something that people would cer, would like to get, that would certainly be something we could, we could review, so.
Thank you, Mr. Zabriski.
Thank you. So to the best of my knowledge, I think the city does, still sends out a welcome package so people know who to contact for their essential services, when garbage day is, for example, when you can put your garbage can, garbage cans out, and when they have to be taken back in. But that's a, it's a, it's a great question, because anybody who moves into the neighborhood, all they have to do is take a walk down the street any day, bump into some friendly neighbors. We've got the ice cream social every year, we've got the Memorial Day Parade. It's not, we have a series of events, there's parks and rec activities. Someone who is moving into the neighborhood, if they're coming in through Inverness or Pontiac Drive, it probably won't take them very long, hopefully, to find an activity they can go to and meet a lot of their friendly neighbors, so.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
I, I think the, the city does do a good job of documenting and archiving information. The resources are certainly there. The website is very comprehensive in terms of how we communicate and how we engage the community. I think there are some things that the city could do to improve, utilizing, simply utilizing some more efficient and accessible channels that are a little more modern, and, and can help, you know, eliminate that, that burden on the city, and just pretty much upgrade their, upgrade their channels and, and make it accessible to residents in the form that they want it.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Edert. As a Sylvan resident, I love the outdoors. I can't help but be upset about the fire ban. How can we separate from West Bloomfield Fire Code and have responsible bonfires?
At, at present time, right now, there still is a burning ordinance in place. However, there have been talks between council and the city manager to where if a resident wanted to make a change, it would, it would require some city input and not just a handful of people that are okay with the burning or not okay with the burning. Personally, I see advantages, advantages for not burning, I see advantages for burning. But I don't want to make any kind of predisposed opinion on something that is against a city ordinance at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salem.
Yeah, I, I would agree. There's, there's obviously an ordinance for open burning, and I can comment on that personally, that about a week ago, my house filled up with smoke, so, from somebody burning. So it's not really the greatest idea. However, I think in some cases, if it's in a controlled environment, covered, in a controlled environment, it might be fine. But again, there's an ordinance against it. So I'm not a huge fan of it, because obviously, with the inherent dangers of it, you know, and with floating, burning debris, it's not really a great idea in a closed community like this. So again, if it was something that the community wanted to talk about, I'd certainly be open to it, but at this point, I think it's a little, it's against our current ordinance, so.
Thank you, Mr. Zabriski.
Thank you. So I like the idea, if our properties were a little bit bigger. So we are in a small community, and our properties are really close together, and it is something that council looked at, and I think we got an opinion from the, the West Bloomfield Fire Department on distances from a nearest structure, and we determined at the time that it, it just wouldn't be feasible to move forward. And I think there was also some, if we did pass an ordinance like that, I, I thought that there was some homeowner's insurance implications and those sorts of things, so.
Mr. Peterson.
Well, it sounds like there are some feasibility issues. I, I am one. I would love to see this sort of ordinance passed, to be able to, to be able to burn under the right conditions, with a covered fire pit and things like that. Obviously, there are some criteria that would have to be met. Adjacent properties need to be taken into consideration, but I personally, if there, if there were a responsible way around the current no-burn ordinance, I would love to see something that, that opens up, you know, bonfire pits, chimeneas, things like that, to residents, you know, to continue to enjoy the lake and the lake vibes that Sylvan Lake has to offer.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
So I, I think that a very, kind of like, an iconic envisionment of, of lake life does involve fires. I mean, it's just a reality. But I also acknowledge that the city is pretty close to, you know, houses are pretty close to each other, and as it grows, that can be a real problem. So I totally understand where people have concerns, there's issues of asthma, there's all kinds of reasons why there, there are ordinances. However, given the right conditions and the right, the right parameters, I think that it can be done safely. I know that that might upset certain people, but at the same time, you know, there, there is something that can be done. There are ways to make rules that, that make it effective, and everyone's safe. I mean, the, the key issue is safety. If we can figure out a way to do it safely, then it's something we should be allowed to do.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Salem. With an eye on our beautiful waterfront, would you support the idea of giving a boat dock space to someone who has no intention of having a boat?
Yeah, well, yeah. You know, I, I think we have some open, I, I know that, that there's a, a list, and I know there's a lot of people that are, are obviously trying to get a boat dock, and, and the list is long. I, I think it's, I mean, it took me 10 years to get on the list, or to get through the list, so. But I think a boat dock space, I mean, if you're on the list and you don't have a boat per se, but you have something to put in the space, I think that'd be fine. I would not be against that at all. I mean, I think everybody should be able to enjoy the water, everybody should be able to enjoy, you know, everything that the lake has to offer, so I certainly wouldn't be against that at all, so.
Thank you, Mr. Zabriski.
I wouldn't be against it either. I think, you know, the, the price of the boat docks are going up every year, and so I don't even know if it would happen. I mean, the, the cost of a boat dock, you know, if you're gonna pay that fee, I think most people want to use and enjoy the lake, people that are gonna take the time and put their name on the list and even install a dock. And we do have a requirement that you have to install a dock, so someone, if it's gonna go as far as having to install a dock, they're probably gonna put something out there that they can use.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I, you know, in, in boats, what people use on the lake, people that actually use the lakefront a lot more frequently don't have boats, but might, might have kayaks, paddleboards, things of the like. You know, it's maybe we could consider, as council, dedicating a couple spaces that are, you know, manpower-based or non-motorized, that can maybe fit a few more residents in that, that meet those criteria. But I wouldn't hesitate to offer the lakefront or a dock slip to someone just because they don't have a motorboat, no.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Could you please repeat that question? I just want to make sure I'm clear.
With an eye on our beautiful waterfront, would you support the idea of giving a boat dock space to someone who has no intention of having a boat?
So no intention of having a boat. So if, that's a hard one, just because it's kind of, there's a little bit of an assumption there that, like, they have no intention of ever having a boat. Now, in the event that someone, someone's name gets onto the boat slip that they've waited 10 years to get on, and they don't have the financial means to have a boat that specific year, I would think that they could at least get, like, a small rowboat or something with a motor. I mean, I don't know how you could possibly afford boat maintenance without at least that. So that concerns me, that that person may be just holding a space for some reason that, that's, that has nothing to do with having a boat. So when I hear that question, it makes me, like, kind of unsure what that really means. But I, I don't want to say yes to that, because it, it seems like there's some malice in, in the intent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edert.
Being on the, the waitlist for several years now, and sharing a space with somebody else, I don't, I don't know why anybody would pay to have a space and then not have a boat. That, that absolutely baffles me, because when you move to the lake, it's the boater's mentality and things like that. People want to get out on the lake, people want you to go out on their boat, people want you to, you know, have fun with them. I don't, I don't really see that there would be any valid reason to have a boat slip with, with no water vessel of any sort at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Zabriski. Do you think that passing a city ordinance allowing golf carts as a viable means of transportation within the city would be a good idea?
I actually brought this before city council, because I, I do think it's a good idea. But like everything we consider on city council, we have to do our research, make sure we're not violating any other state laws or rules or regulations, and this particular issue is so complex, I can't even remember all of the things or roadblocks that we ran into. And I think one of them is essentially that today, the state is no longer licensing even legally outfitted cars. I can't remember specifically, but I like the idea. If someone can bring forward a proposal that answers all the questions, I would absolutely consider this.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
I, I do think this is a good idea. I don't see why not. I, I would support something like that, yes.
Mr. Clark.
I have to come out in support of that, too. I think especially electric golf carts are way more efficient in terms of size and their, their carbon footprint. I have yet to ever hear of any sort of reckless issues using a golf cart. There, there's been many years where people do use, have used golf carts, albeit maybe not legally. We, we have enough experience seeing golf carts in the neighborhood, and you can look at other neighborhoods close to us where golf carts are used legally or not legally, and say, you know, listen, we have, there's always gonna be new technology introduced. There, there, you know, from electric scooters to this or that, we're going to e-bikes, we're really going to have to consider that transportation does change dramatically over time. We, you know, we don't have any horse and buggies, and, you know, things move forward. So I think to get people to the lake, to get them to their boats, sure, golf carts do make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edert.
I would be in support of alternative forms of transportation, i.e. golf carts, if and when people can stop at a stop sign, and when people will adhere to 25 miles an hour, and when people act responsible enough to not cause bodily damage to somebody else just because they're not paying attention to where they're driving in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salem.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, and if and when we pass it, I'm probably gonna go out and buy a golf cart, so. That's, that's the first thing I'm gonna get, so I don't know if my wife will let me get one, but I'm probably gonna go out and get one. But I, you know, inherently, just like anything else, I mean, it, it comes with some responsibility, and it's obviously gonna come with some restrictions, and it's gonna come with insurance and different things like that. It's not just buy a golf cart and away you go. So I think those are obviously things that have to be thought through and, and considered in, in council and, and everything else. So obviously, if we can get past that, and if anybody has ideas to do that, I'm all for it. I think it's a great idea, so.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Peterson. Being a small community with limited resources, what is your position as it relates to sharing services possibly with Kegel and Orchard Lake? Could you give an example?
Well, one, one issue that, would I be in support of it? Under certain circumstances, yes. We have to be very selective about which services we want to contract out or share with other communities, the kind of impact they have on our quality of life, living here in the, in the village. One example this would be, we've discussed sharing chief of police with neighboring cities. That, that notion has, has not come really to the residents, or, you know, hasn't been offered as a solution in about a year now, but that would be an example. If we were to hire a dedicated police chief, that police chief could be the chief of, of another department, and, you know, help save the city some dollars. I don't necessarily support that particular scenario, but if it were IT or equipment or maintenance equipment, things like that, I don't see why we, we wouldn't consider sharing certain things with other cities, no.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
So I think that the, the question probably comes from the root of the, the last little breakdown we had over sharing a police chief, or the, or just the discussion of sharing a police chief. We were, you know, we were just in, in very much in the early discussion point of that, and the community came out in unbelievable and overwhelming support. Someone who does, I'm a person who does quite regularly attend council meetings, and I don't think I've ever seen more people than that. I mean, it was, the place is packed. Actually, tonight's pretty packed, too, so that's impressive. That being said, I, I think police chief's probably out. I, I mean, if, if we can drum up public support, it does make financial sense, but it's not all just about finances at the end of the day, it's about services. We need to make sure our services are reflective of the community. But things like the parade, I would love to see the parade linked back up with Kegel Harbor, or, or different things like that. So, so I mean, there's, there's definitely a lot of ways that we do overlap these services. I mean, the reality is, is our police, they back each other up every, pretty much, most stops. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edert.
We currently share services for dispatch and fire rescue with Tri-County Fire Department, which we share with Orchard Lake, Kegel Harbor, and dispatch comes through Bloomfield Township and West Bloomfield, depending on which dispatcher is available at the time. As far as sharing a police chief, we've discussed it on council, and the feasibility of having a chief that spends equal amount of times at both departments is just not gonna happen. There's, there's always overlapping of, we help Kegel, Kegel helps us, we help Orchard Lake, Orchard Lake helps us. There, there is cooperation between the- Lake, Orchard Lake helps us. There is cooperation between the departments with doing their job, but at this current time, I would like to keep everything in-house and under our own control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salemmy.
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Etter. We already do share services, Tri-County services. I'm a little bit on the fence about the police chief, and the only reason I say that is because our current city manager is obviously our acting police chief. Not that he doesn't do a fantastic job with not only city services, but the police department, too. My only concern is, obviously, he's not trained to do that job particularly. But if we were able to share a police chief with Kegel Harbor, obviously, he's well-qualified to do that. If we have a police chief that's, well, that is qualified, obviously, we'd have to go through a budget review, though, whether that would be something we would be able to fit into the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Zabriski.
Thank you. So, times are really good right now, but they weren't so good a while ago. And so, we looked under every rock, looking at opportunities to share services. So, I think it's a responsible act on the part of city council, whoever it is at that time, to look at any opportunity. We have some experience with the police chief. I admit we've looked at it a couple times, but I would be open to looking at it again. However, I think our residents speak loud and clear when they voted for the Public Safety Village that they wanted to stay. So, any move we make would not be without, you know, a lot of communications, a lot of thoughtful consideration. Plus, we have our city manager acting as a police chief right now, and I think, I think that's something that city council really needs to consider, succession plan on how we're gonna transition that. So, we do need to consider sharing more services.
Thank you. Next question will start with Mr. Clark. What policies do you support to increase the effectiveness of the police department in security, crime prevention, and law enforcement?
So, the policies that I support, and I think are appropriate for a community of our size, are adopting a community policing model. By what that, by that, I mean, basically, it's a little bit more old school. So, the police know you by name. The police walk the beat, you know. I mean, that might mean them getting out of their cars and interacting. So, we have stuff like, I'm not missing the name right now in my head, but the Police Day that we have at the community center. That's a good example of it, but I think day-to-day it needs to exist. I mean, they should know the teenagers in the neighborhood. They should know who, you know, who is out there. And I don't mean that's, like, to give them some sort of special treatment, but if they're aware of what's going on and there's communication amongst the police and the residents, you get a more safe area. I mean, if someone knows something's up, then they're gonna tell the police. And that's really important because us being on the ground are the most effective tools for the police. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Etter.
I think our police presence is adequate. I haven't, in the last 12 years, had an instance where a police officer or some kind of emergency rescue was not available, whether it was emergency, non-emergency, whether they were on a patrol. We just had an incident where a vandal knocked our mailbox off of the, out of the house, all four of them, actually. And we were backing out of the driveway, and I just honked at the day sergeant who was driving by, and he stopped, took a police report, looked into it, and there was another resident that stopped and said, "I saw the whole thing happen," gave a description, and they followed up with it. So, I think that our police department, I think they are doing what they're required to do. I'm not saying that there's not ever room for improvement because there always is. I just think that with the effort that they put through, they give as much time as what they can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salemmy.
Yeah, I would be hard-pressed to criticize the police or our police department for the job that they're doing. I think they adequately patrol. I certainly would love to see them, you know, checking speeders, and I'm sure we all have the same issue. You know, we're all, every day, we see somebody flying down the street, and it's kind of annoying. But, you know, just like any other department, or any other business, or any organization, there's always room for improvement. So, obviously, if there are suggestions to improve the police department, or improve a policy for the police department, you know, that's something certainly that should come in front of the council, and certainly would come under consideration, for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Zabriski.
Thank you. Great question. One of the things that I did when I first got on the city council originally was work with our city manager, John Martin, on changing the image of the police department, trying to work to get to them some of the examples that were given. Reach out to the community, say hello, stop and talk for a while. And of course, like, every action, there's an equal and opposite reaction. So, that came with people saying, "Well, why is the police car stopping for so long?" So, shouldn't they be out patrolling the streets on my end of the street versus the other end of the street? So, I think we have adequate police coverage, but something that I think that, a message that may not be heard from people who don't come to our meetings, I think we've lost two full-time police officers in the last six months. So, retention right now is an issue for us. We don't pay our police officers competitively to what's going on in the area. So, they are, there are opportunities, more opportunities than there were in 2011 and 2010, when we made some of our choices, so.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
To echo a couple of my fellow candidates, I do think when it comes to, you know, crime prevention, response, you know, actual security, I have no complaints. I've had very positive experiences with the police department. Under those circumstances, they respond quickly. I think they do a great job, and that's one of the beauties of having our own police department in Sylvan Lake. The presence alone, having our own vehicles, I think itself is a deterrent. That's something we need to keep around for a long time. I agree 100% with what Mr. Clark has to say about a community-based approach and engaging residents in a positive way. I have two young girls at home. I want them to see police cars and, you know, yell, Officer Schultz, or, you know, or Officer Carson, or what have you. I don't want them to fear the police, or fear police cars, and I think that is, you know, that's a really unique thing and an opportunity that we in Sylvan Lake, you know, we have to take that kind of approach and encourage our police department to take that kind of approach and get to know their neighborhood.
Thank you. This will be the last question prior to the closing remarks by the candidates. If, and we'll start with Mr. Etter. If elected, what two things do you hope to accomplish in this term?
If re-elected, I would like to accomplish working with the council members and the city manager to hopefully do something to either renegotiate or work out pricing with the water and sewer people. Our bills over the last four or five years now have just tripled, and it, I know from when we had babies, the laundry, the washing machine, the dryer is always running, the dishwasher is always running. There's always something with the water coming or going to keep everybody clean and out of dysentery way. It's, and unfortunately, it's, like I said, I would just like to work on that. The other thing that I would like to work on is I would like to see a unified effort between our city and Kegel Harbor to re-establish the Memorial Day Parade.
Thank you, Mr. Salemmy.
Basically, two things that I would be very interested in doing is obviously making sure that we're fiscally responsible, making sure that we're staying within our budget and we're spending responsibly. And I have to agree 100% with Mr. Etter regarding the water bills. You know, I would certainly like to tackle that issue and understand why that's going on, number one, and what we could do to possibly change that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Zabriski.
So, the police chief is a part-time, well, is our city manager. Our city manager is acting as a police chief. One of the things I would like to get accomplished before we go is figure out what is our plan for when John finally does retire. He'll kill me because he says, "I'm not retiring anytime soon," which is great, but we gotta have a plan. We gotta talk about it. And so, we should have some idea of what we're gonna do to bring back either a police chief slash city manager, someone who can take the administration burden off the city manager. The second thing I'd like to do is the parks and rec, making sure our parks have a plan and have the funding they need. One of the things we did was pass this beautiful community center. We passed the millage to fund it. We didn't pass the millage to pay for the ongoing maintenance, and it's coming up, that along with the roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Yet, far and away, my top priority coming into office would be clarifying our future around our police department and the appointment of either a full-time or a part-time police chief. You know, John Martin, he does an outstanding job as city manager. He wears multiple hats for the city, you know, and does the best job he possibly can. You know, he is, he is quick to admit that he's, you know, he does not want that role for himself, but he's done what's right for the city in that time. But we really need to think hard about what the future looks like without John Martin as the chief of police. That is my number-one focus coming into office. I definitely want to see continued support and expanded support around parks and recreation. The lake is far and away our greatest asset in the city. We need to showcase it with amenities and services that open up the lakefront and open up, you know, our beautiful parks and properties to residents throughout the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
So, the two most important issues to me, first are gonna be, like, creating more of a forward-facing, younger city council. The reality is, is, you know, people continue to get older. There's going to have to be some point where a torch is passed. It's just the way it is. So, I really want to make it feel very inclusive to other residents, you know, especially younger ones who are moving into the neighborhood with families. I think I have a unique position in that I can kind of reach out to them in a different way and give them a line of communication so that they have a stronger voice in council. So, that's really important to me. It's just really modernizing city council, modernizing city government, and making people feel empowered. The next most important thing is gonna be finding the chief of police. I mean, that's a ballot measure right now, the mill part. So, obviously, we're gonna see that residents support it this upcoming election, and it's really important that we hire the right chief. So, I'd like to have a hand in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we begin closing remarks in reverse order. We'll start with Mr. Zabriski.
Thank you. Thank you again to the League. Thank you to the other candidates for being here. Thank you also to everyone in attendance. As you make your decision on who to elect for councilperson, please consider who will best represent your vision for the city. I've said it before, you don't have to be on city council to make a difference. If you want to sponsor a community program, you can do that. Come to city council and be a part of the city. Volunteerism helps keep this city great. Prior to ever running on city council is volunteering on the Parks and Recreation Committee. I regularly attended the Planning Commission meetings, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the city council meetings. So, please vote for me on Tuesday, November 6th. Michael Zabriski. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salemmy.
Again, I'd certainly like to thank the League of Women Voters and all the viewers who took the time to watch this. I certainly hope I've answered all your questions here tonight. Certainly, if there is anything that I can help clarify about my position on any of tonight's questions or any issues, I'd certainly be happy to talk with you personally. I appreciate your time and support, and I look forward to serving you and Sylvan Lake in the future on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Etter.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, the audience in attendance tonight, the viewers that are gonna be watching this on tape delay. Like I said, this, I was interim before. I'm in office now. There are some, some things that I had stated that I would like to have done, and things that I think that over the next term, I can probably at least get a stranglehold on some of the things that I would like to see done for this community. Thank you for the consideration of your vote, and look forward to seeing everybody on November 6th.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
I'd like to thank all the Sylvan residents here for your thoughtful questions, and the League of Women Voters for giving us a platform to express ourself. It's really, this is the, this is like the crux of democracy, really, to me. So, I'm excited to be involved in city government if you elect me. I, you know, I'm here to bring a fresh perspective. I'm here to be approachable and forward-facing, being a local business owner, a person who's constantly outside with my family. I'm very, very easy to get a hold of. I try to be approachable, judicious, and listen to all of your concerns. So, I want you to know who I am, and on one hand, you're voting for personalities. What I've heard tonight is a lot of unification. We're not really all that different. We all just want the best for our community. So, you know, keep that in mind as you're voting. And, you know, I just want to be responsive, transparent, and give you the best service that I could possibly provide. So, that's what I offer as a city council member, and my name is Ben Clark. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Yeah, League of Women Voters, you guys have really done us a service as candidates and a service to the residents of Sylvan Lake, and also did a really excellent job of curating the questions. They're a great reflection of the types of topics and issues I hear from residents when I talk to them about issues that matter to them and affect our quality of life in Sylvan Lake. So, thank you for that. I'm excited and really, really to see the enthusiasm and participation from the community. And it sounds like there is a real drive to be more inclusive to all of our residents, whether they participate in city council or not. And I'm excited to see that. I'm excited to bring a fresh perspective and change where it makes sense within city council and throughout Sylvan Lake.
Thank you. This concludes our forum. The League of Women Voters would like to thank the audience, the candidates, city clerk Denise Striden and her staff, and community television for making this forum possible. For further nonpartisan information on these candidates, check the League of Women Voters website, L W V O A dot org, for our voter guide. The paper voter guides will be out, they're telling us, September 30th, or a couple days after that, also on vote411.org. When known rebroadcast times of this forum will be on the League of Women Voters website. The League of Women Voters is funded by contributions from concerned businesses and citizens. Our membership is open to men and women over the age of 16. The National League of Women Voters has suspended student dues for two years, so students can join for the next two years and not pay any dues. Remember to vote November 6th, 2018. Democracy is not a spectator sport. Thank you and good night.[1758.61][1758.61][music]